Council, Budget Review Committee, and Planning Commission. Will you all please join me in the pledge allegiance? Kendra, maybe we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Alex Johnson.
Mayor.
Councillors Newton Azor. She was supposed to be remote, I don't see her yet. Uh, Councillor Thompson.
Here.
Councillor Montague.
Here.
Councillor McLeod.
Present.
Uh, Councillor McGee.
Present.
Councillor Smith.
Here.
We'll move to Planning Commission.
Could you get me?
Oh. I said your name, but I didn't see you on there. I'll mark you here.
Thank you.
Uh, Planning Commission, um, Skylar Bailey is excused. Commissioner Cardoza.
Present.
Commissioner Miller is also excused. Commissioner Green. Commissioner Bunch is also excused. Uh, Commissioner Barthol- uh, I'm sorry, Bartholomew.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Hello.
And Commissioner Cockram.
Here.
And then Budget Review Committee, uh, Committee Member Summers. Bach.
Here.
Locey. He's supposed to be remote, but I don't see him. Uh, Larson. Samuels. Rollins.
Here.
And Cisneros. Sorry, I said that wrong. Alright, that's it.
Um, next scheduled business, the introduction, the City Manager Peter Trotean.
Thank you, Mayor. I feel like I should turn the table this way because you're all on this side of the dais. Well, except for the recent addition. So, good evening, Mayor, Councillors, members of the Budget Review Committee, and members of the Planning Commission. Welcome to this joint work session on the important subject of Albany's Capital Improvement Program. For some of you, this will be the first time that you've participated in the CIP process, so we'll take it slow and we'll invite your questions. The Capital Improvement Program is an important part of the city's long-range planning process. It helps a city plan for and prioritize investments and reinvestment in the city's infrastructure. It's a planning tool, a forward-looking process, that helps us focus on the big picture. And it is a means of communicating how limited resources are being planned for allocation to the city's continually growing capital needs. The CIP provides a schedule for anticipated projects over a five-year planning window, with the projects that are identified in the first two years, in this case fiscal years twenty-six and twenty-seven, included in the development of the biennial budget. It's guided by the city's strategic plan, as well as by public input. The development of the plan is coordinated between all city departments responsible for capital projects. This includes fire, police, parks, recre- parks and recreation, the Economic Development Division in community development, and Public Works. The CIP is divided into eight main categories, including accessibility, parks, public facilities, revitalization, stormwater, transportation, water and wastewater. And each category addresses a major infrastructure service provided by the city. Each category has a list of funded projects, and typically, and understandably, I think you'd agree, an even longer list of unfunded projects. Why do we show projects if we can't fund them? Well, they reflect the needs of our growing city, and at some point, they'll have to be considered. And placing these projects in the CIP provides visibility of needs that are on the horizon. If funding becomes available, it can be applied in a systematic way to these projects. If there are no means of funding the projects, the Albany community needs to be aware of this fact, too. The risk of infrastructure failures increases when we can't properly maintain and preserve that infrastructure. When maintenance is deferred or overlooked, it ultimately becomes more expensive. The anticipated project costs in each of the major categories over the next five years in this CIP is estimated to be about eighty-one million dollars, made up of funding from many sources, including SDC's systems development charges, revenue from water and sewer rates, the state gas tax, the general fund, and grants. Staff identify and secure alternate sources of funding wherever possible, and this CIP includes about a one and a quarter million dollars in federal grant funding dedicated to construct the fourth phase of the Cox Creek Interceptor. The structure for tonight's meeting will include an introduction from city staff for each of the major categories, followed by an opportunity for questions and discussions from council and board members. The CIP is also made available for the public to review and comment on prior to its adoption. It's also important to note that this is a draft document. The input that you provide will change this version, and a final document will emerge at the end of the process. Now, in a moment, I'll turn this mic over to Stacy Bel Castro, our city engineer. Stacy will cover the majority of the presentation tonight, but Kim Ledain, our Parks and Recreation Director, is also here to cover the Parks section. Sophie Adams, Economic Development Manager, will cover revitalization. Chris LaBelle, Fire Chief, will cover public facilities. And questions from councillors, Budget Committee members, Planning Commissioners are welcome, and there will be an opportunity for questions and discussions. Before I turn the mic over to Stacy, let me give credit to Jeff Babett of Public Works Staff for the creation of the document. While it is a collaborative effort, somebody has to hold people's hands and push and prod and coordinate to make sure it all gets done. So, many thanks to Jeff. Okay, Stacy, let me introduce you.
Thank you, and hello, Councillors, Budget Committee members, and Planning Commission members. So, Peter already introduced me, but I'll just go ahead and do it again. My name is Stacy Bel Castro. Uh, my position with Public Works is City Engineer, and I will be covering the Public Works chapters included in the Capital Improvement Program. Um, before I get started, I did want to just provide some framework on how Public Works goes about identifying capital improvement projects that are included in this CIP. It is definitely a collaborative collaborative process. Um, engineers, oper- operations staff meet to discuss the projects. We also have interim meetings, in addition to when we are developing a new CIP to look at projects that are under construction, projects that are in out-years, and then projects that we put in our parking lot to consider for future CIPs. Um, for many of the chapters, and City Manager Trotean mentioned this, have an unfunded project list. Where that unfunded project list derives from is a lot of the chapters have a planning document, a water facility plan, a wastewater facility plan. Parks has a master plan, and projects are identified in those plans and included in the CIP in the five-year planning window. Those that aren't, they get placed in that unfunded project list that is at the back of each chapter. Alright, so I will go ahead and provide the introduction to the accessibility chapter. So, the chapter just includes one capital project. It is our accessibility program. This project has funding of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per fiscal year, and its purpose is to address barriers to accessibility in the right of way. Common projects that we construct with this program is to replace ADA ramps, make sidewalk repairs. We're going to be constructing a transit stop near Heritage Mall, and then we are also looking at replacing ADA ramps that surround our government buildings, medical facilities, and schools. Um, all of these projects are prioritized based on the citywide self-eva- self- ADA self-evaluation and transition plan that was just completed a year ago. This isn't just a Public Works chapter, the accessibility chapter, so the city does make citywide ADA improvements. A lot of these aren't just, uh, they're not a capital project. You know, for example, we've changed how we present at public meetings, and then we've also made changes to the website. Last thing I'll say is that any city project, be it publicly or privately delivered, it is evaluated for ADA, and it is required to comply with ADA. An example of a Public Works project is the Queen Avenue Street Improvement Project that happened last summer. We replaced sixty ADA ramps with that project in order to comply with ADA. Any questions?
So, with that, the curb ramps would come out of this money, but the, the rest of the project would be a transportation money project? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillors. Board members, have any questions? Comments?
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about our projects. My name's Kim Ledain, and I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation here. And so, on our list, you'll see we have a very short CIP list, but it's small but mighty as we are going to be constructing Deerfield Park this upcoming summer. In the past, you haven't seen, when we brought items to, to our CIP document, it's been key projects that we hope to be able to accomplish in the next five years. We made a pretty, um, made a decision this year to include all of our unfunded projects that were identified in our master plan, as well as in any contracts or leases that we're in, specifically with Greater Albany Public Schools for Albany Community Pool. So, as you can see, we have a fairly lengthy unfunded project list. Um, as we continue to see how finances shake out and then, um, general changes in our construction environment that we're going through, we're going to wait to see how the next few months settle out, how the Deerfield project ends up. Um, and then hopefully, we'll have a little bit of money left over from City Services fee that we'll take a look at our unfunded list, figure out if we're able to work with any other granting agencies or partner agencies, and hopefully move some of those up a little bit earlier than, you know, two more years from now. But with just everything being so in flux right now, we're making the choice to just have Deerfield as our one identified project on the CIP list. Any questions?
I'll just say one more time, thank you.
We're so excited.
I am.
So, my question is the unfunded projects, so if we can find ways to help find money for you, you'll move some of those up?
Sure, yeah, we would love that. So, um, our department is kind of unique as we, um, fund projects not only through some money through the general fund, but we also generate our own revenue through user fees and classes and sponsorship and grants. Any opportunity, we can get our hands on some additional money, we're more than happy to do that. So, if we are, um, for example, if a partnership comes through and they're able to apply for a grant for a trail improvement project, while it might have been on our priority list as maybe a number two instead of a number one, if they're able to match funds or, or find a majority of the funding, then that moves up, and, and we do what we can to scrounge and scratch and save and get it moved to the funded list.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, so SDCs, um, very happy, as last year, we updated our fees for the first time since two thousand and one, um, and it has made an impact as we are, we are generating more revenue, um, for future projects. Our next big project that I see us using SDCs on is a, a park in South Albany. Uh, is it very much needed? It is an area that is absolutely booming. I get quite a few calls every month from folks being like, I just moved into Henshaw Farms. They told me a park's going to be here soon. When is it being built? Um, and that all depends on how fast we get our SDCs together, um, and how we look at our resources and figure out how we can not only build the park, but then be able to maintain it with the resources that we currently have. So, um, SDCs can only be used for mostly capacity enhancement. Um, and then we do have some that we're able to use for infill, but it's on very specific parks and very specific elements.
So, I get the same calls about the park. I live not that far from there, so.
Don't worry, it's, it's on the list.
Hayden is building a hundred and seventy-six homes just on Lockner Road, so there's going to be more phone calls, just so you know.
So, on this unfunded list, do you have, you know, some sort of priority?
Okay.
We do. As long as, you know, when you get funding, you're able to pull from that priority list. I understand it depends on how much you end up getting and all of that, but, um, yeah, having it on the CIP gives us an idea of what the priorities are, so not having them on there. Hopefully, you have this priority. Thank you.
No problem.
I forgot to ask, councillors online, do you have anything, or Commissioners online?
Nothing for me, sir. Thank you.
Thanks.
Nothing at this time.
Nothing.
Thank you. Make sure I don't forget you guys, you know, chime up if you have something, please.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, are we a question? Go, come on. You're, you're part of us, you're good. You're on the team.
I had a question about parks funding, um, specifically about the Henshaw Farms and when new developments come in. Are those are those, um, subject, like, are they paying any impact fees for Parks and Recreation? Okay.
Yes, they are paying SDCs for it. Um, and in that particular area, just for, well, greater context is why you might, why you might see me back here in a few months. We own twenty-plus acre piece of property down there that was purchased about ten, fifteen years ago as land banking. Um, initially, there was a thought of maybe putting a, uh, sports facility down there, like a multi-field. Those are not necessarily resources that we have financially to do, and our partner, well, our good friends at the YMCA, they've done a really lovely job of kind of filling that niche. Um, and so, when we did our master plan in two thousand and nineteen, our community very much said loud and clear to us, we do not want new facilities. We want you to take care of what you have and be able to expand for park growth for areas that aren't needing it. So, that kind of gave us our walking directions. So, we have twenty acres down there. We will not build a twenty-acre park, so it would be a matter of, um, figuring out how we use that resource to help generate some additional funding, um, and then work with our neighbors down there to see specifically what they want. When we looked at Deerfield Dogs as something that is talked about quite a lot, and we were surprised that a dog park was not what was recommended by that group. In all honesty, I could see a dog park going in at the South Albany, um, park because they're so densely packed, and people love their animals and their animals love to run, so that might be, I could be proven wrong again. But, um, we're going to be pretty mindful in reaching out to all of those communities that are going in there because they've been promised a park, um, and say, okay, here's our certain amount of acres. Here's our budget that we have generated through system development fees, um, and who knows, it may be a grant. Uh, what, what can we do down there? So, yes, we are collecting fees to help offset that. Parks today for, um, our most recent parks since two thousand and nine, which is on the east side of town, it's about one point eight acres, and it took about one point five million dollars to make. So, um, we know we're probably looking at at least a five to ten million dollar investment into a South Albany park, so we need to spend a little bit more time generating those funds before we can do it.
Thank you.
Commissioner, you used the, you used the term, uh, impact fees, and I just wanted to clarify for you and everybody else that in Oregon, they're called systems development charges. In Washington State, they're called impact fees because they address the impact of new development, which in some ways makes a little bit more sense. And interestingly, you're about to hear from the Fire Chief. In Washington State, we can, uh, they can charge impact fees for fire because when you develop, you need to have a new fire station ultimately, but in Oregon, you're not allowed to do that. So, in Oregon, the ratepayers have to, or the taxpayers have to absorb that cost.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Alright, good evening. Uh, Chris LaBelle, Fire Chief, appreciate the opportunity to, uh, speak this evening. Um, I'll keep it very brief. I will start with a success story that things that go into the CIP do get accomplished. And one thing, this will be reviewed for some folks that were a part of the process in two thousand and twenty-three. But, what Chief Wooten had talked about in the last process was the need for a training facility, which is underway. We were able to accomplish that. This has been a goal for the Fire Department since the late seventies, and so, um, we just couldn't be happier that we were able to accomplish this goal. A couple of the challenges that Chief Wooten had mentioned, um, in two thousand and twenty-three was relocating of the city buses, which occurred, and then us funding, uh, finding funding to, um, construct the, the building, which we were able to do through a grant fund. So, we're expected to, um, have the facility fully operational in September, so very exciting for us. Um, in the past, we would travel to Corvallis or to Polk County, to other fire departments to use their facilities. We're forever grateful, but it's going to be nice to be able to have it right in our backyard. Um, a couple of things that did carry over from the previous, um, CIP document, and it is tied to, um, Fire Station Twelve where the training facility is going to be, is a replacement of that parking lot and, um, additional, um, concrete on the south end of that property beyond where the footprint of the new training facility will be. As you can imagine, thirty years of buses and heavy fire apparatus driving on that ground out there, um, it's definitely going to be, um, in need of replacement. Um, also, one thing that, um, has carried over is upgrade of our radio system that our long-term goal has been to get to digital. We did just complete a six-year project and upgrade our current VHF system, which, um, has been a game changer for us. Uh, previously, uh, communications, um, just across town, um, were challenging at best. Uh, the new system went live in November, and when they tested the system, we were actually able to hear the Fire Chief in Syo talking to the Fire Chief in Halsey on portable radios, and it sounded like they were right next to us. So, um, that was a big deal for us. That was a huge safety concern that we had for our first responders. But we know that's a temporary fix, that we need to get to that digital communications platform, and so we are putting money away, um, as a department, knowing that that's where we need to get in the future, and knowing that this is something that all county fire departments need to go to. We'll continue to look at, um, grant options out there because we know that there's better success when it's a regional grant versus one department just asking for money. Uh, one other item that carried over was, um, gender-neutral locker rooms. So, three of our five stations really lack, um, adequate locker room space for our female employees. And so, our goal is to try to go to a pod system similar to what we have at the downtown station in Millersburg, to where it's a locker room in the middle, around the outside are individual sleeping quarters, and then individual restrooms and showers. The caveat being Station Twelve. Um, Station Twelve is fifty-one years old, and we just recently did an upgrade to our station alerting system, and we were met with some challenge with this cutting-edge technology, with this, um, old electrical system, and, and trying to navigate that. I will say, though, um, in two thousand and twelve, we did do a seismic upgrade for that fire station, so there is some life left in that building, but looking long-term, we had one contractor look at it, and he did mention that trying to accomplish what we wanted to, that, uh, it might be cheaper to build new than to try to retrofit that building. If that is the case, uh, internal discussions that we've had as part of the leadership of the Fire Department is that would be a great opportunity to take a step back, and really, is that the best place for that fire station to be? That maybe we could repurpose that for a training building? And then, is there a better location in South Town for a fire station? That a lot has changed in fifty-one years, and would it make more sense to have something maybe near Fifty-third or Calibas and Elexon? So, we'll have those conversations, but it's good to, to forecast for the future. And then, one thing that we, we did add that wasn't previously on there, um, Chief Harden, Police Department, we had conversations about making sure as we see, uh, growth in our community, especially on the east side, that, um, we have something in this document that is for an additional fire station, as well as a, um, east side precinct or substation for the Police Department. Making sure we're looking at staffing needs as well as, um, facilities out there to make sure that, uh, we have adequate response times. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Council, Commission. Those online, have anything?
Question? Timeline for, uh, a new Station Twelve?
You're, good question. Yeah, that's, um, har- hard to say. Um, like I said, we, we have probably fifteen years worth of, uh, at least of good life left in that station. But if we got to a point where we needed to make a decision about trying to retrofit that to get it up to the standard that we wanted for adequate facilities for our female employees, um, yeah, that would have to come sooner rather than later. But knowing that that seismic upgrade was just in two thousand and twelve, w- we do have some time. We have talked about the need for identifying potential land or something like that.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm Fifty-third for Fire Station.
And a grocery store, I heard last night, too.
Thank you.
And a park.
And a park. Not, not, not what they do development up here. Yeah.
Okay, good evening. My name is Sophie Adams, and I manage the Economic Development Department here at the city. Uh, tax increment financing, or urban renewal, is a tool that cities use, um, to invest in capital projects within a certain geographical boundary within the city, um, and ultimately with the goal of spurring private development and removing blight. So, Cara, or Central Albany Revitalization Area, is the City of Albany's one urban renewal or TIF district currently. So, this is just one page, um, within your capital improvement plan. The changes that you see in, in this new version reflect the life cycle of an urban renewal district. Cara is nearing the end of its life. Um, so, that's, that's why you'll see the changes here, more of a summary. Um, I just want to draw quickly your attention to the picture in the middle of the page. That is of your beautiful new Monteith Park. And so, that's, that's just one picture of the waterfront project that we've been working on for the last several years. It's in its final stage right now with, um, contractors right now working on the Plaza Street along Water Avenue that will, uh, be completed by this fall, and we're really excited to be able to open that up after that for festivals and events and, and bring a whole new, uh, a whole new era of life to our waterfront area. So, I'm happy to take any questions if you have them.
Commission, Council.
Great, thank you.
Hello again. I have, I think, the next four chapters. So, we're on stormwater. The projects that are included in this stormwater chapter, they are funded by the Stormwater Service Charge. The Stormwater Service Charge went into effect in two thousand and seventeen. That rate was set low, and then it was increased over a period of time. The goal was, after five years, that we would have enough, um, rate revenue to be able to cover the cost of stormwater improvements that are constructed in conjunction with other, other projects, namely, transportation. So, historically, transportation funds have covered the stormwater portion of a street project. This is the pipes, the curb and gutter, the, the inlets, anything that's capturing the, the water and treating it. When the current CIP, the one that's in this current biennial budget- When the current CIP, the one that's in this current biennial budget, when that was approved, we had built up enough revenue that we were able to fund a stormwater program at a $400,000 level. And then we had one facility project. This is the first time where, in this CIP, stormwater, the stormwater funding is covering 100% the cost of all of the stormwater improvements.
Well done.
And, and it really is huge. There are three stormwater projects that are going to be constructed in conjunction with street projects that are in this CIP. They total $2 million. So that's $2 million in transportation funding that we have available to make street improvements instead of on storm. And so I just wanted to, to share that with everybody. The other project I think I want to highlight because it's a little unusual is we do have a stormwater maintenance crew building. So this is for the group that manages all of our stormwater quality facilities. They don't have a space at our operations facility. And what this project would do is we have an existing concrete pad and utilities where we can place a modular building at much lower cost compared to adding an extension to our crew quarters building. I should mention that we do collect stormwater systems development charges, but they are very new. We just started collecting those fees, I think, a year ago. And kind of similar to the stormwater rate, they're starting low, and then we'll increase them over time with the hopes that in the future, the stormwater systems development charges will be able to cover a portion of the cost of the facility projects in this CIP. Are there any questions?
The comment, that seemed like a little tiny amount of money when that was first enacted. And I thought this is never going to add up to, but it's, it's like compounding interest. It's, I'm, I'm excited to hear that it, it amounts to something now, real money.
And I do like the fact that it's going to pay for itself. So I think that's great. Counselor Bonnig, do you have something? Counselor Thompson? Anyone on, online? Anyone online have anything?
I do not know.
I don't. Nothing from me, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so transportation. The transportation projects in this CIP, they receive funding from state gas tax, systems development charges, and water and sewer and luau franchise fees. The majority of the projects that you see in this CIP are overlays that will be constructed on arterial and collector streets. These are the streets with the highest traffic volume in the city. This is consistent with the objective that was adopted in Albany's strategic plan, which is to maintain these streets at a better or fair condition. So there are twelve overlay projects that they were constructed around twenty years ago, plus or minus. Many of them with the $10 million general obligation bond that I think it was passed in 1998. When we built those streets, a decision was made to invest in the structure so that twenty years later, when the top part of the asphalt starts failing, we can remove the bad asphalt, grind it out, replace it with good asphalt. And it's a much less expensive investment than if we wait for the failure to go down deeper into the structure requiring a full reconstruction. An overlay is about one-fifth of the cost compared to full street reconstruction. And so I did simple math, just taking the overlay projects in this five-year planning window. We are going to be constructing the grind and overlay at a cost of 14 million. If we did not have the funds to make that investment now, we would be spending $70 million to reconstruct the street. And this sort of illustrates the keeping good roads good concept that we're often talking with Counsel about during our discussion for the street maintenance fee. There is some good news with local streets. So we were able to restart the slurry seal program. And that is the asphalt surface treatment program. The slurry seal, it's a thin surface that seals the cracks and just kind of protects the surface of the asphalt. We like to do it to local, our local residential roads that are in fairly good condition. It helps extend the life of these local roads, and it's very inexpensive. After this summer's slurry seal project is completed, we will have slurry sealed all the roads in Albany that are between ten and twenty years old. And so we are discussing internally that moving forward, we probably are just going to start slurry sealing all local roads. Even the ones in bad condition, they'll see some benefit for having this placed over them. And it is a fairly cheap, cheap thing that we can do to our treatment, that we can do to our local streets. The other thing that we added in this transportation section is a local street program that's starting in fiscal 2028. With funding of $1 million annually, we will need to develop this program more. So we have not identified projects yet, but we wanted to include that funding in this CIP since we're looking over that five-year planning window. We're working on a five-year paving plan that will help identify which local streets to tackle first. And we'll be discussing the paving plan with Counsel. And I think that's the last thing that I wanted to highlight. Any questions?
Go ahead, Counsel.
So I think you, I don't know if you said this, but the, the local paving program is not going to happen unless we pass the street maintenance fee. Is that correct? Or at least that money, we don't know where we'll get that money if, if we don't do that.
Based on our estimated expenditures and revenue, we do believe we can fund that.
That's a drop in the bucket.
Yeah.
Really? Okay. And then a comment, I'm excited to see the Thirty-fourth Avenue overlay. That road's getting terrible. Thank you.
Anyone online, Counselors, Commissioners? Okay, I'll see. I'm waiting for you.
Okay, thank you. I looked over this, and I was excited to see that we were making some progress with our roads because it's such a priority. I noticed that most of the projects, except for one, were west of down, the west of downtown versus east downtown. And Third Street, east of Ellsworth, is very difficult. And it's kind of a major road, even though it's not labeled arterial. I was just wondering how, how you were assessing the needs of different roads? Because I know that's one of, it's a quote, "local road."
Yeah, so for, for this CIP, we did try to include all of the arterial and collector streets that were reconstructed twenty-plus years ago. We want to make sure that we construct the overlays now. If we wait too long, then the failure is going to extend into the, to the base. And then we have to end up reconstructing them. So it's just, I mean, the answer is, it's just, it's a funding issue. Third Avenue is horrible, so is Fifth Avenue. There's so many local residential streets. Thirty-eighth Avenue, we always bring that one up during, during discussions. I think it has a pavement condition index rating of like three. So, yeah.
Thank you. I am anxious to have some of our downtown streets fixed.
To, to fix Third and Fifth and Thirty-eight, that would be a complete, a full reconstruction project, correct?
Yes.
Because it's pretty bad.
Yes.
Coming off the roundabout towards town. I will, I will always drive in, but I don't like going down that street.
And that, that wouldn't be funded under this local program because that's going to be way more than a million bucks, right?
Not, I mean, it could if we saved the money for three or four years.
Excuse me, somebody's TV is loud. Thank you. Carolyn, you have a question? Counselor?
Yes, thank you, sir. I just wanted to acknowledge the, the Fifty-third, Fifty-third Street improvement that is scheduled from Pacific to, to Martin, Fifty-third and Chinook. I know a couple of years ago, when that was, when, when the neighborhood was repaved, there was a lot of questions from neighbors about, you know, why that area was not included in the street repairs. And so I'm excited to see that the rest of our neighborhood will now be having street repairs in the animal kingdom. So that's, that's exciting. And I'm glad to see it there. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you. Thank you, Stacy.
All right, so we're on to wastewater. Waste water projects are funded with utility rates and grant funding in this CIP. There are capital projects eligible for systems development charges. However, our sewer SDCs are set at a level that currently it just doesn't provide enough revenue to cover the debt payments that we have in the wastewater fund and have enough left over to cover the cost of capital projects. There are three facility projects in this draft CIP that would be eligible for partial funding with SDCs if there was enough revenue. But there, there is some good news. We were successful in getting two grants for the fourth phase of the Cox Creek Interceptor, totaling $3.35 million. So that project has a total estimated cost of $5.7 million. So it'll cover a good portion of it. The Cox Creek Interceptor projects, we have been constructing these phases since, I think, 2018. They were identified as a high priority in our wastewater facility plan to help address sanitary sewer overflows and increase the capacity of the pipe. The third phase is currently under construction. That phase extended the pipe just east of Interstate Five. This fourth phase will include a, I think it's going to be a Jack and Boar underneath the airport, and it'll extend the pipe to Goldfish Farm Road, really opening, I guess, or, wrong, east, yes, east, east Albany area up for development. Let's see, other project I want to highlight because Counselor Smith actually brought up the sewer lateral replacement program during the work session on Monday. The program was created over twenty years ago. It is unique to Albany. We have not heard of any other agency in Oregon that has this program. But we do hear often from other agencies asking how we run the program. What it does, it allows a one-time replacement of a qualifying private sewer service lateral. The laterals, the, we have staff that reviews requests from property owners. These requests always include a video. And one of the qualifying factors is there has to be a structural failure that shows that there's infiltration getting into the pipe. So this program really is a win-win for property owners and the city. By replacing the private sewer pipe, we are eliminating that infiltration from getting into our wastewater system. All that wastewater has to be collected at our plant and treated. So there really is a, a cost savings to eliminating that. And then it's a huge lift for these property owners who are having issues with, with their, with their sewer. Nobody wants to deal with that. We have replaced twelve, over 1,200 laterals since the program was, since Counsel approved the program over twenty years ago, which is such a big impact in the community when you, when you think about it. So, I mean, we, Public Works, it's one of those programs that makes us feel good, and we just appreciate that Counsel still is supporting the program. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions, Commissioners, online members?
Well, I said this on Monday, but I am a recipient of that sewer lateral replacement, and it definitely helped us out. So I do appreciate that program as a homeowner in Albany.
I think you're good.
Right.
I, I have a question on those. Yes. How, do the pipes have to be a certain age?
They do not. The, what qualifies a pipe is if there is some sort of structural defect that's causing groundwater to infiltrate into the pipe.
So the owner would have had to maybe have an inspection or see sopping water to indicate that something's wrong, and then they would contact you if there is?
Yes, and often the most common way we hear about this is people are having problems flushing their toilet. They call Rotaruder out or another plumber, and they'll clean, try to clean or televise the line. And a lot of the, the local plumbers and people that do that type of service know about this program. And so they'll direct people to the city's website and to the application.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, last chapter is water. The projects in water are all funded from utility rates. It's water, same story as wastewater. The systems development charges that we collect, we collect enough to cover debt payments, but there is not, not enough revenue to cover facility projects that would be eligible for SDCs. I want to highlight that this CIP includes projects to transition Albany to an automatic meter reader system using smart meter technology. The acronym for this is AMR. AMR allows automatic, real-time meter reading. So the benefit to the city is it eliminates the requirement for physical meter reading. So like the people on the, the motorbike, and some of the meters aren't located in easily accessible places. It also provides data on leaks or unusual water usage that the city can use. Or some systems, there's also capability for the public to, to monitor so that we can more quickly figure out if there's some, some water leak or the, the meter will indicate that. And we are really excited to get started on this program. The first physical, fiscal year, we're going to have to be constructing the infrastructure. It requires antennas at different locations in the city. And we'll be coming to Counsel. There'll be a request for proposal to identify a AMR company to provide the service.
Any of those companies?
Will that data, real-time data be available to homeowners as well?
I know that a lot of systems have that capability. And so that'll be one of the options that we'll review with the request for proposal.
Counselor Smith?
Are the companies that provide that service local?
I don't know, but it's, it's common. I know a lot of municipalities are using AMR.
Thank you.
When I worked at Tremble Navigation, one of the projects I worked on was a company called Badger Meter. And what they did was they actually had the meters attached, and the person could literally drive down the street and pick up all the, all the different systems. So that was ten, twelve, thirteen years ago. So I'm sure technology's improved since then. Anyone else online would like to ask a question or express a concern?
Mayor, Commissioner Larson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I see that it says that the project is $150,000 just for 2026. I see that it says that the project is $150,000 just for 2026. What does it cost to, like, versus paying somebody to go and read the meters? And is it going to save us money?
It it will save us money over time. I don't have that information. That would have been good, good information to have for this meeting.
Is the savings intended to go back to the consumer or for the city?
To.
Ultimately, it goes back to the rate payer because it makes it makes it more efficient to run the system. But I think the biggest advantage gets to what Commissioner Lawson was talking about is that when a homeowner can tell the next day that they have a leak in their system, and they don't have to wait 28 days to find that out, they can avoid a lot of expense.
Or you realize you're not going to have a pool after all.
Ouch, you filled it.
Also, it'd be really interesting if the RFP, if we could talk up requests, see if there's any sort of integration with smart irrigation systems as well as a way to save money. I know there are some cities out there that provide, you know, discounts to people if they get one of those smart smart water meters for irrigating. That way, they're not, you know, running their sprinkler during a rainstorm type of thing.
I made a note, we will look into that. Okay, so one other project I do want to highlight is the Vine Street Facilities Viability Study. This study will evaluate alternatives for the future of the Vine Street Water Treatment Plant. And I believe we talked about this with counsel when staff presented on the water facility plan that was recently updated. Because of the age of the Vine Street plant, the condition of the buildings, seismic concerns, the recommendation in the facility plan was to conduct a study to analyze the life cycle costs of making the improvements at the existing plant versus looking at other options, including cost and lifetime of building a plant at another site. And so this will be a very, a project that staff will be very involved with with counsel. And we will be checking in to discuss options and getting direction.
Thank you. Any hands, any, Counselor Smith?
I need to back up to wastewater. I had a question about the federal grant portion of the Cox Creek Interceptor. Is that grant certain?
Staff met, I think it was last week. And so the grant liaison is still kind of moving, moving ahead with it. And all signs point to, yes, we're trying to be optimistic.
Okay, thank you.
So when I was back there lobbying for infrastructure funding and reestablishing those payments, Senator Wyden, Senator Merkley, Val Hoyle, Senator, excuse me, Representative Hoyle and Representative Bynum supported it. So I'm hoping that they have had enough impact that we get those monies back.
Frost.
Anyone online have anything?
No.
So thank you very much, Stacy.
Thank you.
My agenda says adjournment. Did you have any further comments, Peter?
No, just, Mayor, just thank you for your attention tonight and online as well. The CIP, as I mentioned earlier, will be made available for the public to review and comment on prior to its adoption. And that will happen at the public hearing scheduled for June 11th. And again, thank you all for your attention.
And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting.